Good morning. We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, June 21st, 2021 to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Mr. Leiner?
Here.
Commissioner Mark?
Here.
Commissioner McCabe?
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Here.
Chairman Jones?
Here. If you will, please let us stand together as we salute and pledge to the American flag, which will be followed by a prayer from our county attorney. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Bless us, oh Lord, our lawmakers, our country, our county, and each one of us as we lift our prayers to you. Bless us and keep us that our walk this day would be blameless in your sight. Guide us and guard us wherever we are called to serve today, in our offices, in our communities, in our homes, that we would be eager to respond to you with our whole being, with that we seek to live upright lives and keep your laws. And when our steps go wayward and our thoughts are overcome by selfish intent, do not forsake us, but call us back that we would once again desire to live according to the righteousness you set before us. May your judgment upon us today find us without fault or flaw, and may our praise to you this day and always be steadfast and shameless. In the strength of your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioners, each of you should have received your agenda in proper time. It was advertised on our county website. Are there any items that you desire to pull or add to this morning's agenda?
I would make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose. The agenda is passed. Next item on the agenda this morning, and the first, is a presentation we have from Ms. Tracy Brenneman, who is the Guardian Ad-Litem Program Coordinator for our area, and we welcome you. Come right on up. Thank you for being here.
Thank you. I believe I have a PowerPoint that they were...
Yes, ma'am. They'll get it up in just a minute.
Okay. While that's coming up, I'll just introduce myself a little further, just so you know where I am. My name is Tracy Brenneman, and I am the District Administrator for the Guardian Ad-Litem Program in Judicial District 3B, which is Craven, Carteret, and Pamlico Counties. I have been in my position just a little over a year. I was happy to be in my position, and then suddenly COVID hit. So, once COVID hit, it kind of shut us down in terms of being out in the community. So, I'm very excited to be here with you this morning and have the opportunity to be with people and to speak about our program. Prior to being in this position, I've been in the field of child welfare with the Division and Departments of Social Services for 29 years, so very excited to be a part of the Guardian Ad-Litem Program. Next slide. So, a lot of people ask, what is a Guardian Ad-Litem Child Advocate? Because that term gets used a lot. And if you'll click on the... Thank you. There is a law, 7B 601, that says when a petition is filed alleging that a child has been abused or neglected, that a Guardian Ad-Litem Child Advocate is assigned to represent that child in court. So, basically, children who are unsafe, that the Department of Social Services takes custody of, each of them, in most cases, is assigned a Guardian Ad-Litem to be their voice and to speak for that child. Next slide. So, what is the role of the Guardian Ad-Litem? And you can just click on the... There you go. Their job is to conduct their own independent assessment of the situation. As we all know, Department of Social Services does a fine job, and our volunteers are there to do their own separate assessment of the child's situation. They are part of the process collaborating with other people involved in the case, such as teachers and doctors and all. And their job is to put all of that information together into a court report and recommend what they believe to be is in the best interest of that child in terms of their safety, their well-being while they're in foster care, and also their permanent outcomes, whether they're going to be going back home to their family, which is what we all want to happen, if it can safely happen, or to go to some other permanent situations, such as adoption, guardianship, or custody with another caretaker. Ultimately, as I said, they go in front of the judge for these kids and speak for them. Next two bullets. And they do... We do ask our volunteers to monitor the cases to completion, so it's a big investment that our volunteers make. Unfortunately, a lot of these cases go at least a year and sometimes well beyond. We actually have children who've been in care as little as few days to 12 years, unfortunately, that a child's not been able to reach permanence for a variety of reasons. But the one constant in that child's life is they've had a Guardian Ad-Litem who has gone the distance with them. So, it's so important that we have these advocates. Last bullet. And, of course, confidentiality is key in what we do. Next slide. And you can go ahead and put all the words up on this one, too. As far as the qualifications for our GALs... Next... Thank you. They have to be at least 18 years of age, of course, so they do have to be an adult. They have to be willing to complete an extensive background. These are folks working with kids, so, of course, we're going to check them out fully in their background process. Next three bullets, I think. Have a sincere concern for the well-being of children, because they actually get very close to these kids and become someone very important in their lives. A commitment to advocate for that child until that safe and permanent plan is in place and the court is no longer involved. They have to be able to be objective, nonjudgmental, culturally competent. We work with a lot of families, and abuse and neglect knows no bounds. I think a lot of times, people think that abuse and neglect only occurs in poor areas. That's just not true. Abuse and neglect is, unfortunately, throughout our county. So, we do want volunteer advocates who come from all kinds of backgrounds to be sure that our children are getting this culturally competent advocacy. Of course, we want them to be able to act respectfully. They are dealing with parents who've made some mistakes, so it can be difficult as a volunteer to, you know, to advocate for a child and work with parents who've, unfortunately, in some cases, made some very serious mistakes. And, of course, they have to have good verbal and written skills, because they do write court reports to present to the judge, which become part of the evidence, and then they also testify in court as well. Next slide. So, why volunteer? Well, there in North Carolina, one of the things I'm most proud of for our judicial district is that we have 100% coverage of our cases, meaning that all of the children do have a volunteer that advocates for them. However, due to the stresses of COVID, we're seeing an increase in petitions. So, we're also seeing an increase, you know, we're seeing an increase in the number of children coming into care and an increase in the need for more volunteers. Our volunteers also... We're also very fortunate that many of them stay with the program. However, cases are becoming more complex. The child welfare system, if you haven't already heard, is in crisis right now. So, the turnover for social workers and all that are there for these kids is just, you know, very serious. And so, again, our volunteers are just crucial. So, we are recruiting more volunteers every day in order to meet this need. And that's why I'm here today, to share this with you guys. Hopefully, you have heard of us, but if not, I hope you'll help us spread the word, because stopping child abuse does impact our entire community. Kids who age out of foster care with no plan, unfortunately, their outcomes are dismal. They often become homeless, involved in criminal processes, substance abuse, and they're going to be in our community. So, the more that we can do to make sure that these kids have a better outcome, the better for all of us. And Guardian Ad-Litem volunteers saved the state a lot of money. In fiscal year 2020... 2019, I believe it was, they saved $12 million in time that would have been spent on attorneys advocating for kids. So, they really do a huge service in many areas. Next slide. If you want to learn more about us, I have left my card, as well as a brochure with the clerk. Volunteerforgal.org is the state website where folks can actually go and apply as well and learn more about the program. We do have a Facebook page at Guardian Ad-Litem District 3B. And there's also a sister organization called Friends of 3B that is committed to raising funds to provide for the needs of children and to support our program. So, Friends of 3B is also another program that, if you're interested. But I will ask that if any of you are part of a civic organization or a faith organization and would be willing to let me come and talk about our need for volunteers, it would be most appreciated, so... Last slide? Any... And I don't know if that's appropriate.
Yes.
Ten questions?
It is. Thank you. Questions from the board?
I have one.
Yes, Vice Chair.
I have a friend who is one of your volunteers. Are all of your volunteers ladies, women?
No, sir. We have male and female volunteers. We also have a couple of married couples, that tag team, because, you know, there can be a lot of... Depending on the case, some cases take more time than others, so they've decided to do it as a couple, which really helps them to provide effective advocacy while meeting their own needs.
And how many do you have at this time for your three counties?
We currently have 77 active volunteers.
Seventy-seven.
Yes, sir. And we have 200 children that are being represented by those 77, or approximately 200. Again, those petitions are...
So, average of three each, or something like that?
Kind of, yeah. It just depends on the family. Some have six, some have, you know... But the other thing is several of them have more than one case, and we really don't want that. We want our volunteers to have one case for two reasons, not to burn them out, and also to be sure we're providing the best advocacy that we can for children. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
I have two questions. First is, what percentage of children would stay in your program for 12 years? And the second part of that is why?
So, very few, thank goodness. One of the reasons is because of... Well, one of the biggest reasons, and this is my opinion, is because of the turnover of social workers with the Department of Social Services. As I said, I came from that background, so it's an extremely stressful job. The state requirements for social workers are extreme and getting more extreme every day, which makes it very difficult. The state is in the process of revisiting some of their practices, some of the training that's needed for, not only for the social workers, but for the management that should be supporting them. And so, unfortunately, every time a social worker changes, the case kind of starts over, because that worker has to learn everything that's happened for that child. They have their own opinions about what's best for that child, and that's just one of the reasons. There's a lot of systemic reasons why that happens. Certainly, sometimes, the needs of the child can be great. I'm also the adoptive parent of a child from foster care who had significant needs, and it is one of the hardest things you'll ever do, is to parent a traumatized child. So, there's much that needs to be done systemically to make sure these children don't have that kind of outcome. Fortunately, not that many. We actually only have two. We have one 10-year and one 12-year. The rest are around a year, two, two or three years. But it just depends in the counties and child's case.
All right. Other questions? If not, we thank you so much for taking your time to come and introduce yourself to us and for the information you provided. And I encourage all of the citizens of Craven County that are listening to this today to please reach out. This contact information has been provided, and I think it's a very, very worthwhile volunteer organization that people need to be involved in.
Thank you very much.
Item two on the agenda today is the adoption of the 2021-2022 Fiscal Year Budget Ordinance. And I'd ask at this time, our county manager and our finance director, if they will to come forward.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's always a pleasant day to come before you with the budget ordinance. After many months of work, we are to the point where this is the document that you would adopt to approve the budget for next fiscal year. We've had many work-study sessions. We've discussed this a great deal to this point. Included with your agenda was a document that looks something like this. It's in a separate cover. This is the budget ordinance that's presented today. Just to give you some highlights from that, we are recommending a $121,196,303 budget. It is balanced, as required by law. It does set the tax rate at 56 cents, and it does appropriate $424,561 from fund balance. I think it's a very good budget. I... You know, you never know when you start, where you're going to end up, but I think we ended up at a spot that feels very comfortable for where we're headed next year. There's a tremendous amount of growth and things that we need to deal with inside this budget, and it plans for future years as well. But most importantly, as I've said since I was here last year, that one of the most important things is it funds a school resource officer at every school in Craven County, and that's been a goal of this board for some time. It is in the budget, and it is there. Mr. Warren, did you want to make any comments? So, we're available, Mr. Chairman, for questions or comments at this time.
All right. Board questions for county manager and finance director.
I just would like to have you state what a resource officer is, because a lot of people don't know.
Right. So, a school resource officer is a... Well, now, for the most part, will be a sheriff's deputy at each school, and those individuals provide support to the school, security at the school, do a lot of different things, but most importantly, they're an interaction point, and I think the sheriff could probably speak more eloquently, between children at a young age and law enforcement, so they begin to build that relationship and comfort level with one another throughout their life. Sheriff, did I...
If I may ask, Jack, if it's all right, the sheriff, if you will come forward and just expound just a little bit. I think there has been a question that's been raised to me, you know? We're not in school, but X number of months a year. So, when they're not at the school, what other duties would these officers be performing for?
And that is a great question. That's one that I get as well. Many of them, when they become SROs, part of their initial process is I want to see a plan from them for after-school programs, whether it be mentoring, sports activities, putting some positive aspects on things for some of these children that, when they go home, they might be from a single-parent home, or they just need some direction. So, we have after-school programs. The ones that do not have an after-school program will come out and serve warrants, serve child support, work as patrol deputies, help with pistol purchase permits, fingerprinting, and other duties as we see where we need them. So, there's many places where they fit in. Also, there's also a pathway for advancement, so they get an opportunity to work in other divisions within my office to see where they're a good fit as we look for their future advancement.
That's good.
They do a lot of things.
Any questions for the sheriff on that, from any commissioners? All right. Thank you so much for explaining that. All right. Now, additional questions for the county manager? Here none. Do I have a motion to...
Remot.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? I just would like, as chairman, to thank this Board of Commissioners for the discussions, your insight, and especially your time that each of you have given over the past month and a half towards this formation of this county budget. Is it perfect? No. No budget probably is. But I think a good faith effort is being made on the part of every commissioner here and staff. My thanks definitely, again, to all of you for what you've done and your participation, but also to Jack, Jean, Craig, Nan, Amber, Ms. Allison, and somebody new that we had on board, and I think needs to be, that most folks will not see, and we have now a county budget analyst, that Ms. Sarah Williams. And I think she's been an asset, wouldn't you agree, to this process, and it was good to have her aboard. And, but again, thank you, Craig, to all of your staff, because I know there was a lot of folks involved in that. Any other discussion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you.
Chairman Commissioners, thank you.
Thank you. All right, Commissioners. Next would be the consent agenda. On the consent agenda this morning, there's right much on there. You have the minutes of June 7th meeting, reconvened session, the regular session of June 7th, the minutes of the June 9th reconvened session. You also have tax releases and refunds, the county garage budget amendment, the Energy Neighbor CPNA funding budget amendment, Craven County Schools Debt Service Interest Budget Amendment, and then a resolution recognizing Dr. Megan Doyle. Are there any items to pull from the consent agenda this morning?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Leiner?
Oh, excuse me. Yes, Commissioner Smith?
Are we going to read the resolution aloud?
Yes, ma'am, after.
We will, at the end, I think.
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Departmental matters. The first item we have is Sheriff Chip Hughes, and also I think we have other representation there from the sheriff's office. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chair, Commissioners. I've got two things on the agenda this morning. One is a payout budget amendment for SRO Corporal Erica Hodges, who has left the sheriff's office to go into the private sector. We appreciate all of her work. She did an outstanding job while at each of the schools she worked at, finishing up there in Havelock at our Craven Community College campus there, so she will certainly be missed. Her payout is for vacation and holiday balance, and she had a zero-hour balance off time. It's in the amount of $6,159.
All right. Any questions from the board for the sheriff before we vote? Here none. Do I have a motion?
Remot.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? And the motion is for a budget amendment in the amount of $6,159. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you. Item B.
Chairman, this morning, I've got with me Lieutenant Chad Smith. He is my assistant, say, jail commander, if you will. He's kind of like our right-hand man in the jail, and he is... I brought him this morning. One, he's kind of cutting his teeth. I do have a chief jailer that is leaving. And as he's leaving, I hate to see him go, but I do need to bring somebody up and make sure that they're prepared, because he's got, probably going to have big shoes to fill, and we figured this would be a good time for him to start the process and for y'all to meet him.
Lieutenant Smith? Good morning, sir.
Commissioners. We are requesting revenue to be moved from our inmate welfare fund and our Board State Prisoner Fund.
All right. You've heard the request, and that is in the amount of $423,000. Are there any questions for Lieutenant Smith?
Well, I think for the public, we should explain what the welfare fund is.
All right.
The inmate welfare fund comes from our canteen services to the inmates, as well as our home services. So, every time an inmate purchases canteen, that goes into our inmate welfare fund. That's how we generate that revenue.
Okay.
As well as making phone calls and stuff like that.
Good enough. Any other questions? Here none. Do I have a motion?
Remot.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Chad. Appreciate it.
Chairman, thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Sheriff, as we always do, I'll give you the opportunity. Do you have anything this morning you want to add? Anything going on we need to know about?
No, sir. I want to thank y'all for the budget, namely, the SROs, as I mentioned last meeting. I thank you for... Because this was kind of put on us in short notice. We did not know, acting forth with the city of New Bern, whether or not we were going to be taking on a different school, different schools that they were going to be leaving. So, I thank y'all for your dedication to school service, the safety of our kids, our educators, and it's just that the comments that I've got, people are very thankful that y'all were willing to take this up and fund to make sure that we're able to protect our kids moving forward. So, that's the biggest thing, and I know that was a big part of this budget, and I thank y'all. Thank you very much.
Any questions for the sheriff, from any commissioners? Commissioner Leiner?
Just off the record, First Sergeant is leaving?
The chief. Chief Scott.
Chief Scott. Okay, First Sergeant's not.
No, sir. First Sergeant's still there. Chief Scott, he is. He's a...
Good man.
He's a great one. I hate to see him leave, but he's just... He's got... He needs to just spend some time at home. He's... He said, "Sheriff, he said, 'I feel like I've done all I can, but I need to heal.'"
That's time to go, yeah.
It's a... We've opened the process up, and we've got some great applicants, but it's going to be tough, as the lieutenant has worked for him for quite some time now. It's going to be very tough to fill his shoes. He'll be a loss.
All right. Any other questions? Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate what you do. All right. Next, we have Departmental Matters Facilities, approval of the county administration parking lot. Mr. Gene Hodges.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. So, for many years, Craven County government has annually leased the Sudan Shriner's... From the Sudan Shriner, 64 parking spaces adjacent to the county administration building. So, that's the parking spa... That's the parking lot that's to the east of our building. It serves as the main parking for people coming into the administration building and for the court facilities. Often, these numbers of spaces is woefully inadequate when there's heavy court counter days or when one-stop voting occurs in the Board of Elections offices that occurs in this building. This year, the county manager's been successful in negotiating an annual lease for an additional 74 parking spaces located on the east side of the Sudan Temple Building. So, that's on the riverside of the Sudan Temple Facility. Included in your packet was a lease agreement that's been drafted and reviewed by the county attorney and the attorney for the Shriner organization. The terms of this lease are the same as the previous lease agreement, which is $25 per space per month. This calculates to an annual payment of $41,400. It's payable in advance on the day the lease commences, which would be July 1st. It's like the first check that finance cuts. This lease is an annual lease, and the leadership at the Shriner organization has indicated that they're eager to continue this agreement as they develop their plans for the future of that facility. And that amount is already included in the budget that you just approved, so there's And that amount has already included in the budget that you just approved, so there's no budget amendment, it's just authorization of approval of this lease.
Okay, all right, questions for the Assistant County Manager? Commissioner Liner?
Gene, in the old, in the old lease, did we always have the right to sublease or lease the spaces here?
I don't think any of that language has changed.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that language, I think that language pretty much, the main changes in this one has been the changes to the actual, the numbers. And we included per our attorney's recommendation to two CFR acknowledgements. In case there's ever any construed that there's any federal money in this lease, you've got to have those two CFR acknowledgements in whatever documents you have.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, sir, I was just going to make a motion that we approve.
Okay, I'll take it.
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? I just make sure everybody understands, this, we have currently 64, additional 74, giving us a total of 138 spaces. And I think that's great, great job on behalf of staff, it's something we've wanted for many years and I want to personally thank the leadership of the Shriner's organization for their cooperation. Do you have something Vice Chair?
Question would be, the $25 a day didn't change from what I read this.
Per month, yes, sir.
But is that for five days a week or is that for seven days? In other words, if there's an event, are we required to allow the public or whomever to use those spaces? Or do we have the right to use them seven days a week?
We have the right to use them for seven days a week. The carve-out in the lease is only for when the Sudan Shriner has their large event. So there's a lot of coordination sometimes between us and them and then, like for example, when they have Mum Fest, the Swiss Bear Group will work with the Shriner directly and it'll just be a communication amongst three organizations that, hey, we're going to use this for this item, this particular event to do whatever it might be. Because usually they would do performances, like they would set up a little stage out here and some kids would do their dance routines or whatnot.
Thank you.
So.
But Chair, when do we have the access to park in the parking lot?
Well, right now, again, we're good now and then starting on July 1st, we'll be able to, the lease will encompass the lot on the other side, on the other side of the building.
Thank you.
Is there a projected time when the signage will be up?
Again, right now, we've got to wait till everything turns over on July 1st, we've got to have some revenue in order to expense it or something.
Good, good job.
Okay, but there's not much point in having it if you don't have signage that says that you can use it. So that's why I said, when is the projected timeline that the signage will be up? Is it one August, is it one September?
It'd probably, it'd probably be August 1st or so before we can have it up and running.
All right, other questions? All right, here none, madam clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you Gene, appreciate you. Next, Human Resources, a request to amend the personnel resolution, Ms. Amber Parker, Human Resource Director, good morning.
Good morning. The Craven County Self-Injured Health Insurance Plan will experience a 5% rate increase for fiscal year 21, 22. And the rates of retiree health insurance paid by the county are specified in the Craven County Personnel Resolution based upon fiscal year 20, 20, 20, 21 rates. The 5% increase will be passed along to be paid by retirees unless the policy is amended to reflect the fiscal year 21, 22 rates as shown in the policy language attached in your packets.
All right, questions for Ms. Parker on the board? Here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? And this is approval of the amended personnel resolution. No further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed, thank you. Next would be Finance, Budget Amendments, Mr. Craig Warren.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Several year-end budget amendments for your consideration this morning. The first three are related to the new reporting requirements under GASB 84. It dictates some of the, some of the changes related to fiduciary activities. During this year's budget work sessions, new reporting requirements for the GASB 84 for fiduciary activities were discussed regarding DSS guardianship funds. In order to comply with GASB 84, a new fund is needed to be set up as well as an adopted budget for, to account for the deposits and disbursements of the DSS guardianship funds. A new fund called the Representative Payee Fund has been established and will track all the financial activity, including the fund balance of the DSS guardianship funds. It is estimated at $450,000. It will be sufficient to cover the estimated revenues and expenditures.
All right, questions for Mr. Warren? Here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Sure.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? This is for a budget amendment in the amount of $450,000. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Also, like the DSS Representative Pay Funds, and in accordance with the GASB 84, the state's portion of the deed of trust fees that are collected by the Registered Deeds Office will also be presented as a fiduciary activity within the annual financial report. Like the Representative Pay Fund, GASB 84 now requires that those fees be accounted for through a budgeted revenue and expenditure account. Previously, we would run them through the balance sheet account as a revenue and then we'd turn around and pay it right out to the state. Now it'll have a revenue and expense account with a budget and those activities will be ran through the Registered Deeds Department.
All right, questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, further discussion, Mr. Vice Chair?
What's the, what is gained by making this change? I know we didn't make it, but the change was made, why was it made?
Some of the changes, the Government Accounting Standards Board thought it would be a little bit clearer to have these particular revenues that were generated by, we're collecting them, but they're for another entity. They're not necessarily Craven's revenues as we collect them and remit them. And so the purpose of it is just to provide them, or what they think will provide clear reporting.
So in the budget book next year, I mean, it'll have its separate page, is that sort of?
Yes, sir, so in the DSS Representative Pay Fund, just back up one second, we adopted in the ordinance, a new fund for that one. Because these accounting, new statements need to be in effect by June 30th, 2021, we had to kind of go back and establish a budget for the current fiscal year. So we're good next fiscal year. The deed of trust fees and the fines and forfeitures that I will go through in just a second, those were not in the budget for next year, so I have to come back and reestablish those.
Okay, any further discussion? Here none, madam clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
The third and final budget amendment related to the GASB 84 would be for the fines and forfeitures. Each month, we, you know, we get a check from the clerk of court and those which have contained fines and forfeitures through the court system and those funds are remitted to the school system. Those are also presented as a fiduciary activity in the annual financial report and again, like the others, their, GASB 84 is now requiring these to be ran through the financial system as a revenue and expense. We'll see next fiscal year and this fiscal year for the ending of the year, the fines and forfeitures will be kind of accounted for in the schools, schools department in your budget.
All right, any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, further discussion? Here none, all in favor, madam clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Moving on to some more year-end budget amendments that we typically look at at this point in the year. We have sales tax transfers to the school debt service fund. The sales tax collections year-to-date through the month of June, which represents March sales, are currently running 25% ahead of the budget. If the Board will recall, we started off the current fiscal year with a very conservative projection for sales tax revenues due to the COVID-19 pandemic. With three more months of collections remaining in the current fiscal year, that would be April, May, and June sales. It is almost certain that collections will exceed our original projections. As required by general statutes, a portion of the Article 40 and 42 sales tax is distributed monthly to counties and is restricted to, and can only be used for school capital or debt service related to school projects. It is estimated that we'll need additional $1,080,000 in budgeted revenue, the corresponding transfer to the debt service fund in order to continue making these transfers.
All right, any questions? Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes, sir, for clarification, when we make a transfer like this, you know, $1,080,000, do we use that to pay off our debt service obligations? Or do we use it against the balance so that we pay off the loan sooner?
You have the option to pay off a loan sooner, we have not traditionally done that with this, these funds. We've been paying the current debt service and whatever is remaining will stay in that fund.
Okay, so these additional monies will go off to pay our typical debt service payments, which then means we would keep an additional $1,080,000 in our budget because we weren't using it for debt service?
Correct, yes, yeah, I got, these, with the statutes, the way that we, these funds are restricted and so we have traditionally paid the debt service.
Using these.
With these funds.
Okay.
If they're not used, they will just stay in that fund and roll into the fund balance, will be available for future debt service.
All right, additional questions? Here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Here none, madam clerk, if you will, call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Okay, the next budget amendment is for health benefit claims. The benefit claims year-to-date are running 5% of head of actials through the first 11 months of the fiscal year and they're projected to exceed budgeted, original budget amounts. It's estimated that $350,000 will be sufficient to cover the projected claims for the remainder of the fiscal year. The funding for, to pay for these increased claims is coming from additional premiums over, budgeted premiums over what we've collected so far. Sure.
All right, any questions? Here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Here none, madam clerk, if you will, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Okay, late listing penalties is the next budget amendment. Our late listing penalties received year-to-date have exceeded the $115,000 we originally budgeted for this fiscal year. These funds are collected by the county and paid to the school system. At this time, it is projected that an additional $37,000 will be needed or collected through the end of June. Budget amount, an amount of $37,000 is being requested to increase our budgeted revenues and corresponding expenditure to the school system.
All right, questions?
Just, would you explain to the viewers what a late listing penalty is?
The, Jack may, may have to jump in here on some aspect of it, but the late listing penalty is when you list, fail to list your, your own time.
Right, let me, let me, so every year.
List with whom?
With the tax office. So every year, you're sent a form, a listing form, for business personal property or other personal property, and I got my tax expert over here to make sure, he's nodding his head, yes. If you don't list and we discover it, there is a penalty for that and those penalties are required by statute to give to the schools. So this is a normal amount, yeah.
All right, additional questions? Here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Here none, madam clerk, please call the roll. Commissioner Liner? Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Okay, last but not least, the rescue squads. Ambulance service fees that have been billed and collected by the county on behalf of the following rescue squads are anticipated to exceed our original budget projections. It is estimated that $45,000 will be needed in order to continue remitting the squad payments through the end of the fiscal year. The projected increase in revenue estimates by squad are $27,000 for Bridston Rescue and $13,500 for Township 7. The $4,500, $4,500 represents the 10% that we hold back to pay for administration and collection expenses.
All right, questions? I would ask, what, is it, Bridston just had that many more calls than some of the other squads, I mean, or was there an error? I mean, what?
Well, it could be, it could have had increased activity. It could be that we just, we underbudgeted by, we missed it by a slight amount, that happens. This is a pretty common VA and I mean, really bad.
So Mr. Chairman, we look at historical data, budget of what their collections have been and it could be a variety of factors, just more calls, different payee source, right? So if you get more Medicare calls than Medicaid calls, then you're going to have more revenue on your 90% collection. So it could be a variety of things all rolled into one.
Okay, any additional question? Here none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion on the motion? Here none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose? Motion passed, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we have next appointments and there are several in here that affect Township 6, Commissioner Liner? If we could just take a brief recess until he gets back because we need all the commissioners here.
Sure is.
All right. The agenda is appointments. First item would be pending appointments. You have that list there. Are there any nominations for any of these positions from the board? You're none, we will move to-
Ms. Chairman, just a quick comment, and I, I know I need to get with Commissioner Lainer, but I, I did receive that email about number eight, Regional Aging Advisory Board. So I need to get with Commissioner Lainer. We will need to try to make that appointment at the next meeting if we can. Commissioner Lainer, if you and I could talk after the meeting?
Yeah, I've already talked to the mayor, he's working on it.
Okay, okay, got it.
Okay, thank you. All right, under current, you have first appointment is for the Craven Community College Board of Trustees.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Dr. James Davis, I'm sorry, maybe I'm ahead of you.
No, no, that's where you're at.
James Davis, Jr.
Okay, we have a nomination for Jim Davis. Do I have any other additional nominations from the board? You're none, he will be accepted by acclamation. Next, you have the Coastal Carolina Regional Airport Authority. You have two appointments there, reappointments. First would be Joe Leahy and Kenny Marsh.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Theron McCabe for Mr. Leahy's seat.
Theron McCabe.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to nominate Joseph Leahy for reappointment, since he's currently serving in the chair, and his professional background is the industry.
Okay.
Okay.
We have a nomination for Joe Leahy for that seat, okay?
Mr. Chairman, I have to apologize, but I had my granddaughter with me all week, so I wasn't able to get this in until this morning. But I'd like to nominate Terry Douglas Morris, whose application I just put on everyone's desk.
All right, that's for the Kenny Morris seat?
Yeah.
All right, are there other nominations? Okay, it sounds like then for the Kenny Morris seat, we have no additional nomination, so Terry Morris will be accepted by acclamation for that. For the Joseph Leahy seat, we have two nominations, one for Joseph Leahy and the other for Theron McCabe. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll, and I would ask each commissioner to please call the name of the individual that you desire to serve. It would either be Theron McCabe or Joseph Leahy. Are there any questions? All right, Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Lainer?
McCabe.
Commissioner Mark?
McCabe.
Commissioner McCabe?
McCabe.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Leahy.
Commissioner Smith?
McCabe.
Vice Chairman Booker?
McCabe.
Chairman Jones?
McCabe. So the vote is six to one. Commissioner McCabe will serve in that position, thank you. All right, next is Juvenile Crime Provincial Council. You have Carlton Metz, Parks and Recreation, and Jamar Wallace. Madam Clerk, do you know if both of these, are they eligible to serve, had they-
Yes, they are.
They are eligible to serve additional? Okay, Carlton Metz seat and the Jamar Wallace, are there any nominations?
I would appoint both of those.
All right, we have a nomination for these two individuals. Are there additional nominations from the board? You're none, they will also be accepted by acclamation, reappointed. Okay, next is the Eastern Workforce Development Board. You have John Wilson, William Green, Anthony Cruz. I would also ask Madam Clerk, are all of these eligible to be reappointed? Have they exceeded their terms?
They have not, and a, a letter was sent in by the director stating how active they all are on the committee, and that she was enthused that they would be reappointed.
Okay, are there any nominations? Any nominations?
I'll make the nomination.
All right, for all three?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a nomination for all three, are there additional nominations? You're none, they will be accepted by acclamation, reappointed. All right, next will be the MS Advisory Council, Mr. Robert Boyd, representing the city of New Bern.
I'd like to re, to nominate Bobby Boyd.
We have the nomination of Mr. Boyd, are there additional nominations? You're none, Mr. Boyd is accepted. Next would be the Craven County Recreation Advisory Council. Ms. McCoy represents the district in which I represent. I would ask that we defer this to the next meeting, if the board would so, be a, again agreement, okay? We would defer. Going to the next page, you have there the Fireman's Relief Fund Board of Trustees. Statement here by the clerk is that once the new fire chief is put in place, that individual would be eligible, or be the one they desire to serve on the Fireman's Relief Board of Trustees. Commissioner Mark?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I think we should defer that to the next meeting.
All right, defer then. You're no objection from the board? That would be deferred also. This is one reason I asked that we wait, because the next one would be the Fire Tax Commissioner representing District Six, Commissioner Lainer, Ms. Joanne Slagle.
Nominate to reappoint.
Okay, we have the nomination of Ms. Slagle, are there additional nominations? You're none, she will be accepted. All right, next is the Nursing Home Advisory Committee. I would think we would need to defer this one, Jack?
Yeah, I tried to, you've tried, I tried to get ahold of her this weekend, and I don't know if she's away, but then no one answered the phone.
I sent an, an email to Angela Priggin at ECC as well.
Okay. I would point out, Ms. Chairman, thank you, Nan helped me here, but there was just a recent email from Angela, there have been three resignations from this board. You are down to a very minimal amount of individuals here. The board remembers several years ago, the process for appointing someone, Chairman, former Chairman Mark will remember, has changed, where actually the board now goes and recruits people, and they have to pass some type of test before their name even comes to you. I knew at the time that was going to be a fatal wound to this board, that you'll never have this board again, because it, it's hard to find people anyway, much less make them jump through hoops. I don't know what you're going to do here. If Ms. Layton doesn't continue, you may only have one, one member left.
Well, I, I, to tell you the truth, I think that COVID probably had a lot to do with-
COVID has been very tough on this board.
And I, I would agree with you, I would defer this.
If I may ask, and I, you just said it, but just to make sure I comprehended it, this was an action by the General Assembly?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Have y'all talked about it, any, in your meetings, Commissioner Mitchell?
Unfortunately, no, we were addressing various personnel issues, governance issues. I would suggest that we need to go back to the General Assembly and say, understand the theory was good, but in practice, it's decimating the nursing home advisory boards. Y'all need to rethink this.
Would the board be in agreement to do as the commissioner has suggested, to get staff to draft a letter? We can present it to the board and make sure you're in agreement with it, but send our delegation requesting that some change be made. Hearing any objection?
No, sir, and as a matter of fact, I would suggest also that we do some liaisons around in counties with it, because I'm sure we're not having, we're not the only ones having this issue.
I agree.
You're no objection? All right, Detective K., Jack?
Yes, sir.
All right. Next would be the Tourism Development Authority. I'd-
I, I would like to defer that, because I just like, seeks reappointment.
All right.
I, that's my appointment. I haven't had a chance to talk to him, but-
All right, hearing no objection from the board, we will defer to the next meeting? All right, thank you. Are there any additional nominations? All right, you see the upcoming terms expiring in July, please take note of them. All right, next on the agenda would be the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Eric Grady. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have three items for your consideration this morning, all three involving county-owned real estate acquired through the tax foreclosure process. The first item involves a parcel located on Mill Avenue in Vanceboro, with a parcel number of one dash V, as in Victor, dash oh eight, dash oh one oh. This is a final approval, the town of Vanceboro has approved this transaction. It is a purchase price of $1,500. That was the final bid. The past due taxes and cost of foreclosure originally were $1,487.25. The tax value is $3,750. I recommend that you approve this.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion on the motion? This is the conveyance of Mill Avenue property, partial one V oh eight dash zero one zero. Madam, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed. All right?
The second item is an initial offer for county-owned real estate located on Gatewood Drive out in Riverbend, with a parcel identification number of eight dash two hundred dash E, as in Edward, dash oh three two. The offer amount is for $3,000. The taxes and costs of the tax foreclosure were originally $2,717.52, and the tax value of the property is $6,000. As the board is familiar, should you approve this initial offer, we'll put it out for upset bids, and it'll be back before the board for final approval after that process runs at court, it runs its course, and I do recommend that the board consider approving this initial offer.
All right, so move. Second, I have a motion and a second. Additional discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
And the third and final off, item is another initial offer for 135 Hillmont Road, with a parcel ID number of eight dash two one nine dash oh oh eight, and that does have a New Bern address. This is an initial offer of $6,750. It was acquired jointly with the city of New Bern through the tax, tax foreclosure process. The original taxes due and the cost of foreclosure were $6,182.47. The value of the property on the tax rolls is $13,500. If the board approves the initial bid, we will put it through the upset bid process, and it'll be back before the board, when that process is concluded, and I do recommend that the board consider approving this initial offer.
All right.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Additional discussion on the motion? You're none, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passed.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Dexter will be the county manager.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, for a second opportunity. Just want to be brief, today, following this meeting, we'll take a tour of the Doubletree. We'll leave directly from here, drive there, and then after that, we'll have a ribbon-cutting area, new Parks and Rec Administration building by Creekside Park. We did tentatively have site visits for the EWP program through planning. After talking with staff this morning, the conditions just aren't favorable for that, we lightened the delay until July. So if you would, you may want to take your own car with you, because once we depart from Parks and Rec, it'll be the, the end of our show. Commissioner Lainer, I don't know, do you, do you want me to talk about the Dick Center meeting, or did you, were you going to cover that in your report? Commissioner Lainer and I attended the first in-person Dick Center meeting in Jacksonville last Wednesday. Great meeting, good, good to be back in person down there, the center's doing well. It is under new leadership. Grace Dolphy, who had been the longtime director of that facility, has moved up within the RI organization, she's now based out of Raleigh. There's a new individual who's the manager of the site, Julia Neal. Commissioner Lainer and I had an opportunity to spend about 15 minutes with her after the meeting, and she'll be coming up in July, and I'd like to introduce her to each of you, if you get a minute, to have some various meetings with folks like the sheriff, the hospital, and some of our mobile crisis units, to ensure that the Craven County citizens are getting a fair shot at getting into the facility down there. Our numbers look good for the year, about 117, but the month wasn't as good at six. So we really need to refocus and periodically push this as we move forward. So Commissioner Lainer, did I cover everything?
I think every, I think that's all.
Again, top two reasons someone's there, number one is alcohol, two is opioids, and there's about a 20% delta between those two.
I'm sure this is the case, but want to make the new police chief here in the city of New Bern up to speed on that? We ought to get him down there and, and visit that facility.
Yes, sir, good idea. I'll add him to the list.
Wouldn't it be a good idea for us to invite him here, because we, we don't know who he is, or-
New Bern Police Chief?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've met with him. And, and I would suggest that all of the Commissioners think about calling, making an appointment to introduce yourselves.
Well, I mean, if you're going to invite him to come here-
Right.
Yeah, I think that would be sufficient.
We'll do that.
Any other questions for the county manager?
Thanks, sir. Yes.
Last point, we have a new police chief in the city, we also have an acting city manager.
Do.
And I know you've met with him.
I have.
I would think would be wise if he would come, just make an appearance in front of our board, so everybody here could at least know who he is and meet him. I'm very encouraged by him, and I think he's going to be, how, I don't know that he is going to be considered for permanent position, but I think already, I've bumped into him at several events, and I'm impressed with where he's headed.
We had a great meeting a couple weeks ago, a lot of energy, got a lot of, a lot of things to catch up on, so hit the ground running, but a very nice person, very nice person.
All right, anything else? Thank you, Jack.
Thank you.
All right, next would be Commissioners' Report. Commissioner Mitchell?
Just one thing, Mr. Chair, we had the annual Craven Community College Board of Trustees Retreat about 10 days ago at the campus. It was held at the Vault Center and included tours of all of the new programs at the Vault Center. It was really, really impressive. I encourage our citizens to think about the workforce development programs and craftsman programs that are there. Many of these have jobs waiting on the graduates as they are finishing up. So the, what started as a, let's try it, has boomed. It is a huge asset to this community.
All right, thank you for that update. Commissioner Lainer?
Yes, sir, if I could, I'd like to have the resolution pulled and read by the clerk, read to the record.
All right, if you will, pull the resolution for Dr. Megan Doyle.
Resolution recognizing Craven County School Superintendent Dr. Megan Doyle, whereas Dr. Megan Doyle has served as superintendent to Craven County Schools to over 13,000 students since August 2016, bringing with her an energy and passion for educating children. Whereas she diligently led and served during the aftermath and recovery of Hurricane Florence, providing housing and provisions for displaced families and students. Whereas Dr. Doyle had a vision and established partnerships to provide an electronic device to every student during the 2017-2018 year, which facilitated transitioning to virtual learning during the COVID-19 pandemic, while also trying to balance students and teachers' safety with in-person educational needs. Whereas she was instrumental in working together with the Board of Education and the Craven County Board of Commissioners to nearly double teacher supplement from 5.3% to 10%, as additive incentive for current educators and a recruitment tool to attract highly qualified educators. Whereas Dr. Doyle was also a fierce champion to increase the pay for classified personnel, and has been a constant, strong voice advocating for the academic success of all students throughout her tenure. Now, therefore, the Craven County Board of Commissioners recognizes Dr. Megan Doyle for her remarkable service, heart, and dedication to Craven County Schools during the past- for her remarkable service, heart, and dedication to Craven County schools during the past five challenging years, adopted this twenty-first day of June, twenty twenty-one.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Lina?
Chair, are you going to talk about the library? You want me to bring it up?
You go right ahead.
Okay, we had a library board meeting on Tuesday of last week, and they were able to get a forty thousand dollar grant to put hotspots. They got five, five hotspots for each library that can be checked out and used for down there. And they got another grant going through to try to get another five for each library, so. They'll have some hotspots, I have, hopefully we won't have to go through it, but they still need the hotspots in areas that don't have the Wi-Fi and stuff, so that, that's good on that part. And just for general information, if the weather holds out Thursday, the cemetery's going to be down here on Tryon Palace on the yard. So if you haven't been, well, we haven't did it last year, we didn't do it last year, so it's been two years since they've been here, so. That's it.
All right, thank you, sir. Commissioner Smith?
I have something I'd like to say, however, I don't know if it's appropriate at this time, because we've not had that discussion. And that is sharing my joy with the celebration of June nineteenth, Juneteenth? And so I, I would like to commend the, the older woman in New Bern and the folk that work with her in putting on the activities that they did locally this week, which has been outstanding. And people from all areas and races who participated. And I did not participate in all activities. I was not able to do that, but it's just been a wonderful experience in also recognizing that the President has set aside Juneteenth as a national holiday. I know that when we talk about this, it may make some folk a little uncomfortable. It need not do that, but I, I want you all to share my joy in recognizing that we have come this far.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner McKay?
Yes, I have a couple of things here. Saturday, I did have an opportunity to go to the funeral for the late firefighter that got killed, respond to a call, and his funeral was Saturday, and had a funeral at the Cotton Funeral Home. And they had a wonderful turnout there. And we were blessed to have the state troopers to let us borrow his horses to carry the, he was cremated, so, carry the, what do you call it there, to the funeral site, and it was, was a nice funeral. I mean, it don't feel nice, but it was a very, very turnout for all the fire departments in Craven County. Also, I attend the Creekside Park with Sheriff Hughes, and I think I'm going to let Commissioner Booker do more talking on that one, because he was there with the dogs and stuff like that. That's all I have to say.
All right, Commissioner Mark?
Yes. You know, last hospital meeting, and the virus, famous virus that has gone around here, we are getting numbers that are much lower. We're averaging probably around four or five a week. And the best part of it is that most of the people that have been treated are young people and who haven't been vaccinated. So, and I think that, in fact, I think as far as testing of people for the virus, I think we're averaging around twenty, twenty-eight percent, and actually, we're ahead of the county in the hospitals. But the other thing is that I'm holding a town hall meeting on Thursday of this week at Fairfield Harbor from four to six. I also have a proposed meeting in Brants, in Bridgeton, in the beginning of July. And that's it so far.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Chair?
Yeah, I've got several items. Number one, Commissioner McKay mentioned, a week ago Saturday, we, we went to the dogs at Creekside Park. There was an event to, to raise money for our canine program, and I have no idea how much money was raised, but there was a lot of, there were a lot of folks there. And they had food trucks, they had stuff for sale, they had a variety of things going on. And probably the most exciting was the fact that I was able to throw a baseball and dunk the sheriff into his dump tank. That was, that was the highlight of my day, so. Thanks to everybody who showed up for that event, and do you have any idea how much money got raised, Sheriff?
No, sir. I don't want to pay any, but it was a very good turnout, and it was in partnership with friends of the Craven County Sheriff's Office, involved our animal shelter, who came out and did rabies vaccination, as well as Columbia Capital Marine Society. I think they've got a lot of animals homes. And one of the big things about this was also a recruiting operation that we put in place to recruit good, qualified applicants to our office and make the public aware of the resources that we have, and a chance for them just to meet the deputies and people who come in our office. I appreciate y'all coming out. That was a lucky shot.
Yeah, well, hey, sometimes you have to get.
Mine was lucky.
Sometimes you have to get lucky. I mean, you know.
They didn't advertise that.
Let's just say. I, I've always been told it's better to be lucky than good, so I, I don't know, but the dog, the demonstrations of the dogs was, was fun to watch. The kids got their picture taken. McKay got his picture taken with the dog.
And you.
And me, and so at any rate, it was, it was a good day. Mr. McKay, Commissioner McKay already mentioned the sad news about firefighter LaBlossi, who was, who died in a automobile accident on his way to a call. And our thoughts and prayers with his family as they, as he, I didn't know him personally, but my son did, and one of my son's employees knew him well, and really said he was a great guy, so that was a sad loss. A week ago on Thursday, I attended the graduation of the First Construction Academy, which took place in James City. We started out with about twenty people, and I talked to the ladies from the, from the DOT, and they said that, that this had the most people complete, they've done these all over the state. They had the most people complete the course that they've ever had. We started with twenty, we had thirteen that made it all the way through, and I don't remember exactly how many, but it was like about twenty-four sessions. It was like six weeks, four nights a week. And so thirteen very excited people, mostly young, but not all. These, this academy is for the underemployed and unemployed, to get the knowledge and the skills, the basic skills, to go to work in the construction industry. The good news is, we've got twenty-plus people signed up for our next academy, which will be starting within the next few weeks, so they're going to do it again and then again. And a lot of people put a lot of time and energy into making that happen, not me, but a lot of people. And so it was really good to see these excited folks as they graduated. I just want to also mention that being on the ABC board, Charles Collins has been on that board for ten years, and he stepped down now, obviously, at the end of the meeting we had last week. Charles has been a really rock-solid guy on that board, and, and I thank him for his service. The last thing I have is that, many of you know, I had a fire at my property in Township One last Monday, a week ago today, at early in the morning. I think it was around six, five o'clock that the fire broke out. I, I was, I got there by about six o'clock, so it was about an hour after the fire was reported. I just have to commend. Commissioner Mark. Commissioner Mark, I started to say Tom, but that wouldn't be appropriate here. Commissioner Mark, I just want to commend both the Tri-Community and the Little Swift Creek Fire Department. These folks, men and women, there must have been twenty-five of them there when I got there, and there must have been ten trucks, and they worked tirelessly, and they were there within minutes of when that nine-one-one call went out. And I don't know if the structure can be saved at this point. I'll probably know more this afternoon. But just a, an outstanding job by these men and women from the two fire departments. And they do it for free, and, and I don't think, you know, I'm going to speak for me. I've never been as, that, you know, okay, so they're volunteer firemen, and that's, that's what they do. I'm now, not that I wasn't before, but now I'm on board with these fire departments. These, these folks really, really stepped up and worked hard, and knew what they were doing also, by the way. They weren't, they, this wasn't a, I don't know if this is politically correct, but this wasn't a Chinese fire drill. This was a, a group of people who knew what they were doing, and, and they did it well. So I think that's enough comments from me.
Chair, let me say one thing, please. I want to thank Sheriff for, at the Creekside Park, every officer out there, their day, male and female, very, very respectful. You can't find every department you go to. And also, I think Sheriff for, he had a hot dog contest out there, and I think he had four. Two of his and two other guys, and Sheriff won the contest, so. Thank you, Sheriff. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. I think y'all said a lot of things I was going to say, so I won't go back over them. Great comments today from all the board. You've been active, and we, we live in a great county. We're truly blessed. And I appreciate the opportunity to be able to serve with each of you. Anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners? If not, we're going to recess, and we will be recessing to go to the Doubletree Hotel. We state this for the record. We also state for the record, we will leave there as a board and travel to Creekside Park for a ribbon cutting ceremony of the new Parks and Recreation Building. At such time, after that, we will adjourn the meeting. It's very important, very important, that we make sure we have four Commissioners. If somebody thinks you're not going to be present at Creekside, you please let us know, because we need at least four Commissioners there, so we can adjourn this meeting today. Okay, we have one that will not, but if you, is everybody else planning too?
Yes.
All right, because we, we need officially adjourned. All right, hearing nothing further, we will recess.